Good evening. We will call this meeting to order. We do have a quorum. Dr. Taylor, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flags of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I look for a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that'll take us to our recognitions for the evening.
We'll call on Ms. Porter to kind of facilitate our packed house tonight. We're glad to have everybody here.
Good evening. We're excited to honor our student athletes and our activities. And so first, we're gonna jump right in with Grain Valley softball, who placed fourth at the Misha State competition during this fall season.
Alright, so we got a handful of the girls from the softball team. Go ahead and come on up here, so everybody can see who we got. As Cameron was saying, it was a great season for us this year. Didn't get off to the best start in the world. We started out the season seven and five, which for a lot of teams is a pretty decent start, but for us was kind of below our standards. And then the next thing you know, we win 23 out of 24 games and won our first district championship since 2012. And kind of a statement on how big and how fast Grain Valley's grown. The last time they made it to the Final Four was 2012. That was in class three. So we've jumped two classes since then. This is our first Final Four trip in Missouri's largest class. Won our sixth to eighth conference championship. Made it all the way down to the state tournament in Springfield. And things didn't quite go our way down there, but we end up finishing fourth, which is the highest finish that Grain Valley softball has had since 2012. And there's only five teams or five states in the United States that play fall softball, and then one that plays in the summer. And those are Nebraska and Missouri and Iowa, Colorado, Georgia and Oklahoma. But they still have national rankings. And we finished ranked number 21 in the country for the fall season. And we're the only school from Missouri to finish back-to-back seasons with 30 wins and finished ranked in the top 25 in the country. We finished 30 and eight this season. And we return a pretty strong core again next year, so we'll try to finish it off next time. But these players that we have right here are most of what we have. We had a few people that are at basketball tonight and had other things, other commitments tonight. But we have Riley Hodson, senior, Morgan Hart, senior, Ava Rosetti, senior, Ashlyn McConnell, senior, Sidney Wagner, senior, Kenzie Rust, sophomore, Abe Scott Carlton, sophomore, and Addie Wright, another senior. And some of the players that weren't able to join us tonight, Madison Rust, Molly Jones, Olivia Slaughter, Zoe Holler, and Sidney Hemmy, another senior. And we have six girls that are going on to play college softball next year, which is really exciting. And couldn't be more proud of this group of kids that got to spend so much time together and definitely deserving of every honor that they received this year. But we want to thank the board and thank everybody in the community for the support that we got this year. It was a great season.
Our next group of athletes is the Grain Valley Boys Swim and Dive Team. And they had several Misha State qualifiers and a state medalist.
Looks like I'm missing a couple, but we'll get started. Thank you tonight to the board for honoring Grain Valley Swim and Dive Team this year. This was a great year for the Boys Swim and Dive Team. This has been our biggest team. I had 17 athletes. They fought hard to be noticed by their competition, and I am so proud of their leadership at the pool, at school, in the community. This year, this group of boys also won their first conference title. It was a wonderful reward for the team and for Grain Valley. We also had more state consideration times. And these athletes are here, and they qualified for state. State only takes the top 32 in each event, so it's really hard to make state in swim and dive. Excellent. My first athlete that I want to talk about is a senior, Keller Phipps. This athlete has been trying to get, we've been trying to get this athlete to join the swim team for three years. This year, he finally decided to join. I think he wasn't sure at first, but in the end, he said he really had fun. It wasn't easy, but it was a great accomplishment. Keller dropped lots of times this year. He got a first-team all-conference title, a conference champs title, and an honorable mention title. He qualified for the 200 IM relay, and his biggest comment was, "Why didn't I join the team sooner?" Thank you, Keller. Ian Johnson came to us from another school and decided to join the swim team. He has worked really hard this year. He got an all-conference honorable mention title, a conference champ title. He qualified for state in the 200 IM relay and the 200 free relay. He is currently working hard training because he's decided he's gonna break some records next year. Swimming is one sport that you can't take time off of. Thank you, Ian. Will Cooper, "This year, I had to compete with band. He was always asking for more practices or time that he could still practice on his own. Last year, he missed the state team by .05, and he was determined to make it this year." He did, and had a great swim season. He got all-conference titles, conference champ title. He swam in the state 400 free relay, where he told me he was gonna swim fast, and he did. He broke his personal best and was so excited about it that he's going on with his training because he's gonna break more school records next year. Liam Gilbert is a sophomore. He is a returning swimmer, and this year had to do every single event. He did awesome and was part of the 200 IM relay and broke one of the school records. Liam has an all-conference first and second team titles and now a conference champ title. This is Liam's second year at state, and he swam the 200 IM relay. And I get him for two more years, so thank you, Liam. Caleb is a senior. This is his first year in swimming, and he really liked it. He said it was hard, but was rewarding when he would drop time in his swim events. He told me never, ever to put him in the 100 breaststroke again, though. It was awful. I told him, "That's no problem. I'll just put you in the 100 fly," which is worse. Caleb joined the state team as the relay alternate. Thank you, Caleb. Morgan Brown, "This year, this athlete decided to add diving to his belt. He normally swam, but this year, he did both. His favorite swim stroke is breaststroke, and he got an all-conference honorable mention title in swimming and in diving. He also got a first-team all-conference title in the 200 IM relay. He now has a conference champ title, and he also pulled out a state diving qualification. This is his first year in diving." Thank you, Morgan. "I've known this next young athlete for a while, and I was really pushing him to join the Grain Valley swim team. Well, this year, he did. Rush is a homeschool student, and he joined the swim team this year. I think he didn't realize how much fun he would have. Rush received his first all-conference title, conference honorable mention titles, and now has a conference champs title. He qualified for state in the 100 breast, three relays, and was .10 away from getting a state cut in the 50 free. He also got his first letter in a sport. He is also a part of the 200 free relay and the 200 IM school record. School records, and I'm excited I have Rush for two more years." This next person is a first time on the swim and dive team. It's Colton English. He's a freshman. He came to us having some diving experience and has been a huge asset to the team. Colton earned his, this year, a second-team all-conference title, second-team all-district title, conference champs title, and his freshman year, he went to state and received a state honorable mention title, placing 12th as a freshman. He's another Gage Wright in the making. I expect to see more diving, great diving from him. Thank you, Colton. Connor Osborne is a senior. He's a returning swimmer. This is his second year of swimming, and he really worked hard over the year to improve his swimming. He had several first and second all-conference titles and now has a conference champs title. He had four individual state cuts, he swam the 200 IM at state, and two relays. Connor was voted on the team with the Golden Eagle Award. Connor's planning on attending college to be a vet and hopefully swim. Thank you, Connor. This next swimmer is a senior, Hayden Harshman. He has always been the team leader. He's always cheering for others, motivating his team, holding them to finish all practices. Hayden has several conference titles. He holds seven school records. He now has a conference champ title. For state, Hayden had six individual consideration times and state cuts in all three relays. You're only allowed to swim two events and two relays at state. He swam the 50 free and the 100 free, and he got a state honorable mention title, and he broke his dad's swimming record. On senior night, he tried diving. He never has dove, but he did great. He scored points for the team. Hayden was voted the team's all-in, all-the-time award, and I agree. Hayden plans on going to college and swimming. Thank you, Hayden. Last but not least is Gage Wright. He is a senior and has been diving since his freshman year. Last year, he pulled out the 2024 state diving champion. Well, he did it again. Gage is the 2025 state diving champion, two years in a row. If you ever got to see him dive, he is a beautiful diver. He has several coaches, officials, spectators, other divers, and peers that would stay just to watch him dive. He has been awarded the Most Inspirational and Dedicated Athlete Award. He also, for the second year in a row, got the Coaches Association Athlete of the Year. He now also holds the Greater Kansas City Conference Record in Diving. That means, out of all the colors of conference, gold, red, blue, white, and whatever other colors there are, he has the highest diving score ever. He also has a first-team all-conference titles in both diving and swimming. He was all-district first-team titles. You can find him at the pool almost every day, all year long, practicing his sport. You could also find him helping anyone who wants to learn to dive or improve their diving. You can guarantee that always Gage is involved. He wants everyone to do well. Gage is also a great swimmer. He has helped the swimmers qualify for state in all three relays. That is tough to practice, both swimming and diving. Gage has four school records, two diving records, and two relay records. Gage also excels in his academics and will be signing on to wash you for academics and diving. Thank you, Gage. I wish the best for all of you of these athletes, and I appreciate your commitment to swim and dive. You all were amazing. The Grain Valley Swim and Dive Team is slowly growing. We still have to fight the not-knowing-we-have-a-swim-team issue. Swimming is a lifelong sport that could save your life someday. A sport or a class to learn how to swim is a must. I'm trying to reach out to as many young people about swimming, and I thank you all for letting me talk and honor these gentlemen. Thank you.
Our next recognition is a Misha State Girls Golf Qualifier. I'll invite Randy Hughes up to talk about Amelia Rose Andreas.
First of all, I want to thank the school board for all you guys do for our schools and all of our activities. If it wasn't for you guys, we wouldn't be able to do all the great things that we get an opportunity to do throughout our athletics in school. So thank you very much for that. Amy, she had a fantastic golf season this year. She was the second-ever freshman to qualify for the state golf tournament in school history. So that's a pretty cool honor for her. Some of her season accomplishments, she finished eighth at the conference tournament, which is second-team all-conference. She finished 13th at districts, and they take the top 22 out of districts to state, out of each district. She was one of 10 freshmen in the entire state of Missouri to qualify for Class IV, which is the highest class of golf. So that's pretty elite company to be one of 10 freshmen in the entire state in Class IV. So that's a pretty amazing accomplishment to be able to accomplish. The best thing is, is she is a freshman, so I get to coach and have her around for the next three years. So it's gonna be great to see how much she improves over the next three years. And she works extremely hard. She's at the golf course during the winters. She's, you know, Saturdays and going and working with her instructor and doing those things. So she's got some goals to reach, but it's gonna be fun to see where she goes over the next three years. So thank you all very much.
Our next recognition is the Boys Cross Country State Qualifier, Landon Blue, who Nick Small, head coach, will come and speak about.
Hey, thank you so much, you know, our board, district administrators, community, just for your support of all programs. It's refreshing to see a packed house in here. I drove up and didn't have a place to park, and I was like, "This is gonna be awesome." So thank you so much for your support. You know, standing at my right here, Mr. Blue has been a part of our program for four years now. And it's been a pleasure to get to coach him, not just as an athlete, but as a man of integrity and, you know, class. I get to see his interactions with all of our kids and how he is a champion of our sport. It's not everybody that grows up saying that they want to be a runner. And Mr. Blue has definitely inspired some of those younger than him to want to do that, you know, my son included. And so it's just been kind of fun to see that. But then, his athletic accomplishments, they kind of speak for themselves. You could look at his all-conference, I mean, ever since being a freshman, being on that list. He's, we keep track of the all-time 5Ks, whether you're freshman, sophomore, junior. He's on every single list, top five in all of them. And I'll be honest, this season didn't really go the way any of us imagined. You know, it started out really strong in the summer, and then he was saddled with an injury that just nagged him all season. And heading into our district championships, you know, we're competing in the highest class, and many would argue the toughest districts in the state. And I'd be lying if I thought we'd be standing here tonight with him getting this award because he was ranked 57th or something going into that race, and it takes top 30 to qualify. He had had that injury all season, and it just, it didn't look like it was supposed to happen. But he laced up, he toed the line, and that kid got after it. It was fun to watch each mile I would come to when he's there. I count, and I'm like, "Oh, my gosh, he's doing this." And then I go to the two-mile, he's there. He's doing this. He's getting after it. And then, you know, come at the end, I have goosebumps now talking about it. He laid down a performance that, when most look back at it, they'll respect it. I mean, it was fourth all-time for us, 1606, I think. You know, on a course that's challenging against competition that was incredible. Ended up placing 18th, up from 57th. And, you know, people, again, will look back at that and be impressed, but we know the story. Those of us that are part of the team and follow the program. He defied odds that day and really cemented his legacy in our program. And it was a lot of fun to watch and even more fun to get to brag about it. The last couple banquets that we've had and his signing as he moves on to college to represent our program there. So, board, thanks again. Administrators, thanks. Community, it's been awesome. But Mr. Landon Blue.
Our final recognition is the Grain Valley Cheerleading Squad. And I will have Ashley Bosserman come up to speak on behalf of the team.
Alright, good evening. First, I just want to say a big thank you to the school board for inviting us to be a part of your meeting tonight and to continue to recognize and celebrate all of our 2025 state champion varsity cheerleaders. Our first practice together back in May, this team sat down and listed out their goals for our season ahead. A few of the goals they listed were, keep practices productive with consistent progress, working to improve, self-improve, because when everybody is strong, we are stronger together, and staying focused while we still have some controlled fun, with the ultimate end goal of bringing back home the state title. Cheerleading to some, maybe standing on the sidelines of the football or basketball games, waving their pom-poms, showing up to community events to look pretty. But Grain Valley cheerleading is showing up every day to throw their bodies over in the air to tumble on an inch and a half of foam, tossing teammates in the air and trusting that they'll be there to catch them. Agility training and team conditioning at 6:00 a.m. in the summertime, when probably most of their friends are sleeping in. And even when their bodies are worn out, hurting, and tired, they show up the next practice to do it all over again. This team has worked hard, time and time again. And after a freak injury that took a teammate off the mat the day before our regional competition, these girls showed up bright and early the morning they competed with positive mindsets, encouraging attitudes, and ready for the challenge of making last-minute changes just hours before they took the mat. We were all so proud of that routine and hitting zero deductions, maybe for the first time so far in the season at that point, and less than a point behind the first-place team, we brought home second place. From there, the road to state continued, and our practices only amplified, taking the judges' critiques, making changes, running routine after routine to perfect every tiny detail. And overcoming many challenges, this team competed four weeks later at the MCCA State Championship in Columbia. In what seems like true Grain Valley fashion, if you know, you know, we had a last-minute injury the week of state that led to even more changes, and again, only hours before they took the mat. It wasn't a perfect routine, but it was a routine that brought home the state title in the 5A small division. We competed against many tough teams and with a lot of outside noise from other teams and districts. I am proud, very proud, of our 14 cheerleaders that were able to rise above and also outscore every single team that competed at the MCCA State Championship across all divisions. So with that being said, I owe a huge thank you to my two other coaches back here, Kylie King and Debbie Moon, who have been such a big part of this process, stepped up when I couldn't be there and who have been the biggest cheerleaders to our cheerleaders. And also our two other coaches who couldn't be here tonight as they're with our other teams as they're cheering currently, Coach Tessa Bosserman and Coach Cassidy Hayes. Thank you to my team, who has given it all and all of this season, even when the practices were long and tough. Thank you to all the parents and family and friends that are here tonight that supported them, encouraged them, and showed up when they needed you. You are a big part of this moment with them. And a special shout-out to our team moms, Courtney Bellamere and Tiffany Cruft, for all the, so much team bonding that they've organized and planned, special ice cream breaks after practice, random gifts and surprises to help keep these girls going. I know it meant a lot to them and us coaches, and they all really love what you've done for them. Really quick, we, I will introduce everybody here. We have seven senior cheerleaders who are amazing. We have Lily Bellamere. Captain Riley Fawcett. Riley Kinzer. Braylon Larkin. Captain Aubrey La Monaco. Sidney Moon. And Taryn Smith. Junior Cecilia Del Rio. Carson Donner. And Seiko Robertson. Our one and only sophomore, Addison Fawcett. And our freshman, Kendall Craft. Cameron Larkin. And Vivian Welsh. And I just want to give a really quick, super special shout-out to two of our cheerleaders who earned All-State this season. For the first time, for All-State and backspotting, we have Cece Del Rio. And four years in a row, which I've also heard has never been done in the state of Missouri before, earning the highest score out of all of them is Riley Fawcett. Thank you again so much for allowing us to be here. We really appreciate everything that you guys all do.
Thank you to everyone that came out tonight for our recognitions. We love seeing the work of our students. This is why we do everything we do. So we appreciate everyone and the coaches as well. If you want to stay for the board meeting, you definitely can. But if you do not, now would be a wonderful time to exit. Alright, that takes us to patron comments. Any school district patron may present information to the board at this time. Presentations will be limited to no more than five minutes. The board will not take any action on any issue not included on the published agenda. However, all comments will be taken into consideration by the Board of Education. Patrons are requested not to discuss individual faculty, staff, or students. Patrons are reminded that this is a public forum, and comments relative to individuals could result in litigation. However, any patron may request to meet with the board in executive session. No response will be given by the board at this time. And we do have someone signed up for patron comments. The first one is Manny Gonzalez.
Thank you. That was amazing.
That was amazing. What a great community we live in. Truly, truly. Good evening, board members and superintendent. My name is Manny Gonzalez and I'm a parent and community member in the Grand Valley School District. Thank you for your time tonight and thank you for supporting the arts. I want to start by saying I'm grateful students have opportunities to perform, grow in confidence, and develop creativity. I'm here because I'm concerned about the recent high school production year in town and the impact some of its content had on families like mine. I'm not asking you to shut down theater or to punish students or staff. I'm asking for greater care and clear process in how mature material is selected for a public school stage. Specifically, there are moments that felt less like thoughtful storytelling and more like messaging that deepens division. There were scenes that appeared to mock Christian faith portraying students laying hands and falling out in a panic hostel style moment used for humor. Whether intentional or not, that communicates to some students, your faith is a joke and it makes it harder for them to feel like they truly belong. There were also repeated sexual or values laden statements and additional references that felt forced rather than necessary to storytelling. Politics were brought in as well, including what felt like the normalization of political or corporate violence, something that I do not believe is appropriate to platform in a school setting. I under this, I understand the play is a social commentary, but in tense times, school-sponsored messaging can deepen divides instead of building mutual respect. In these tense cultural times, it matters what we elevate and celebrate publicly. I want to be clear, I'm not trying to force my personal beliefs on others. I understand we live in a diverse community, but diversity should cut both ways. Students and families with religious convictions or more traditional values should not feel like they must quietly swallow ridicule or abandon their values just to participate in theater, earn roles, or be a part of the arts community they love. So here's what I'm asking for. A more transparent review process for selecting productions. One that includes clear criteria for age appropriateness, balance, and respect for religious beliefs. Two, stronger content advisories and earlier parent communication so families can make informed decisions. And three, a clear commitment that school-sponsored productions will not demean faith traditions or pressure students to compromise deeply held beliefs just to belong. I'm not asking you to censor art. I'm asking for responsible stewardship because this is a public school representing the whole community. Please be mindful that the way we choose material can either build bridges or widen divides. Thank you for listening and thank you for your service to our students and families.
Next, signed up is Jan Brill.
As an old high school teacher, I love it every time we have recognitions here. I come to you tonight because I expected that you would be dealing with the approval of a seventh grade American history curriculum. I'd like to begin by saying the outreach to the community has been wonderful. The response to the community, not so much. So, one of the reasons I'm speaking tonight is because I think I've come to all of them. And, and those people who haven't been coming may be thinking that it doesn't make a difference. And I'm here to say and to demonstrate it does make a difference because I encountered the seventh grade American history curriculum, which I found lacking. And it was taken under consideration. Some changes were made, although I would prefer that it include in its terms the triangular trade and the electoral college. I found it a great improvement and, and thank the teachers who, who worked very hard on it. But please know, community, that the, the school board and the school are trying to reach out and you have to reach back and it does matter. Also, they give you pizza. Thank you.
That is the end of our patron comments. That'll take us into reports. We do have a resolution to authorize the issuance of the general obligation bonds refunding bonds with LJ Hart and Company. So I look for a motion to approve the parameters resolution for the sale of up to 6,500,000 general obligation refunding bonds with LJ Hart and Company.
So moved.
That'll take us into discussion.
Yeah, we are pleased to have Tom Pizarkowicz and Wesley Townsend with us tonight from LJ Hart to go over a presentation of the, the purpose of this refunding and taking advantage of this opportunity and to answer any questions. And then I will say they're gonna, they're gonna stick around as a bonus round because the next item on your agenda is a ballot language for a bond issue for the spring. And although they have no presentation for that, we thought it would be helpful to have them stick around and help, help the superintendent answer any questions you might have.
Yes, thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. And actually, as part of my presentation, I do have some projections for a future bond issue worked into that, if, if that's okay. So first, let's start out talking about the opportunity to refinance your 2021 bonds that are callable March 1, 2026. We're within the 90-day window so we can lock in a refinancing. So if we go to, Nick, if you want, yeah, we'll stop here. Looking at the history of financings with your district dating back to 2011, there's a column in the middle that says savings, 6.3, almost 6.4 million of interest savings from previous refinancings. And then if you look on the left-hand side, that paragraph, we also had some prepayments of bonds. So a total of about 6.8 million in avoided interest expense. So we're looking to add to that and get over the 7 million threshold. The next page. On the top left-hand side, we have the current payments on your 2021 bonds. And these were for the, mainly for the addition at the, at the high school. And they go out to 2030, there's six and a half million left to pay and they're at a 5% interest rate. We actually sold them at a premium so you had more funding upfront. And we put a five-year call feature on them. So then on the, towards the bottom right, what we're proposing is actually issue 6,375,000 of refunding bonds at a 4% interest rate. And the yield range from, it's about 2.9%. So by doing that, and we're going to accelerate some of the principal payments because your debt service fund levy can accommodate that. So we're actually going to shorten the financing by one full year and the projected interest savings is going to be just over 333,000. Net present value benefit, 3.72%. That's the, the savings as a percent of the financing amount. I like to see that at least over 3%. The state more or less mandates to participate in the direct deposit program, you have to be over 1.5%. So we're, we're well over that as well. If we look at, next page, I know this is kind of difficult to see, in the left-hand side, your current situation in the debt service fund. So the blue column is the revenue generated from the $1.30 debt service levy. And I'm assuming just 2% growth in assessed valuation to be conservative. Then we have the, the pink column are the total payments on all your debt by fiscal year. And then the purplish column is the projected balance in the debt service account as of June 30th each year, so after the payments have been made. You can see how your balances greatly exceed your, your, your payments each year. Very good growth. Because of that, that's why I'm proposing we push some of these principal payments forward. You pay that debt off faster. And so if you look on the right-hand side, after the refunding, your balances come down slightly, but quickly turn around with significant growth. And I have the, the yellow circled numbers. First, as an example, next fiscal year, you're presently set up to pay just over 7.7 million of bonds. It would change to eight and a half million. And so then with that, with that savings and then growth, you know, you're going to be in a position to accommodate another no tax rate increase bond issue. Any questions thus far? Okay, so this is, that's the refunding. Just looking ahead briefly, looking at your general obligation bonding capacity for the April election. I won't go through all these numbers, but we start with your assessed valuation, 588 million. Your legal limit, you multiply that times 15%, you have to subtract off the debt that you have outstanding totaling 56 million. And then you can add back some cash. So down at the bottom, your legal limit is just over 41.8 million. Never like to go up to the, the limit, so 40 million is kind of the, the, the top figure there of what you can pursue. So then quickly looking at a, a sample repayment plan, if you pursue a $40 million bond issue, we would actually delay principal, it would be a 20-year financing, delay principal payments to 2039 after your existing debt is all paid off. And then these payments will go out, as I mentioned, 2046. On the next page, looking at the cash flow analysis in the debt service fund with the refunding and the, the, these new money bonds, look at the far right-hand side. You can see how your balances track nicely with your payments. You have about one year's worth of reserve in debt service and that's kind of where you want to be. And then when you get out in 2030, your balances flip again and you're going to be in another position for a, a bond issue or, or pay these off quicker. The next slide, we always look at the 10-year US Treasury note, just a, you know, barometer for the overall municipal bond market. Dating back to 1960, the average rate is 5.77%. Presently, the 10-year Treasury is right around 4.10. So on a historical basis, you know, it's, it's a very good time to borrow. If the Federal Reserve continues to cut interest rates, I, I expect this, the rates come down even more. So that would be very beneficial for a, a future bond issue. So then we just have the resolution for the refunding bonds right now. This would authorize board president, superintendent, and LJ Hart to lock in the financing once we get investors in place. I imagine I'll probably put this in the market next week. The interest rate, the yield I have right now is around 2.9. There is a, a ceiling within the resolution that says if, if rates jump up on me, I have a 3.75. If it goes above that, I have to come back to the full board. I don't anticipate that, but that, that is a, a parameter within the resolution.
So all, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
All right, thank you. We'll get to work on that.
Thank you. Our next item is the April 2026 ballot. I would look for a motion to approve the April 2026 bond issue ballot measure.
So moved.
Okay, discussion.
I do have a, I don't know if this is a question or how to, how to really frame this, to be honest. When I read through this, I was a little confused by the statement. Let's see, it talks about make construction and renovation improvements to Matthews Elementary, including but not limited to new entrances, additional classrooms, gymnasium, parking, and improved traffic flow. To me, the improved traffic flow is a, an outcome of additional parking and that should be reflected in, in the ballot language as opposed to the outcome. So, any thoughts on that, Dr. Welly?
I will say I agree with, with your assessment on that, that, that is worded differently than the others, which are physical, physical construction pieces or renovations. The, the reason we landed with this language is because the, we are not far enough in the, in the design phase of the project to know exactly what it is that is going to be constructed in order to accomplish this outcome. So in this particular case, we feel like people who are familiar with Matthews will relate to the outcome language and that'll motivate them because they'll say, there absolutely needs to be improved traffic flow there. I don't care how you fix it. And although we have some thoughts on how we'd fix it, it's that balance of, if you put it in the ballot language, it, it better be true when you're on the other, when you're on the other side of it. And we felt like we, we need to lock in ballot language before we actually know how we're going to solve it exactly. So if, if the, if the board does feel like an outcome language is, is problematic or is maybe, you know, inconsistent for the flow of the ballot question, I would probably suggest that we strike the phrase. We do have parking is included in there and we can campaign on improved traffic flow. I'm not sure that it's problematic to be in there, but if, if, if the board would be more comfortable with something, with another way of wording it or removing it, we can certainly do that. But that, that's, at least I've, you've given me a chance to kind of share the thinking on, on why it is the way it is.
My only other question is, 40 million is a lot of money, but it's not a lot of money. And you've listed several things here that, you know, just doing them, having been around when we've constructed schools and done other things, that's a long list for, for the 40 million. You think that's realistic?
You are, you are exactly right. It, 40 million is a lot of money, but it looks like we're going to try to do a lot of things for our 40 million. And yes, we, I, I'll give you, you know, we, we obviously don't know exactly how much every piece of the project is going to cost. So in the planning of, given the scope of what we intend to do with this $40 million, roughly half of it will go to Matthews and the improvements that will be made at Matthews. Now, we think on the planning side, we're going to end up with a master plan at Matthews that costs, the actual cost to do it all at once is going to be more than $20 million. But, so we will, we'll draw a line at some point to say, in that 18 to 22 million dollar range, perhaps roughly half of this bond, what can we do, what can we do right now to make a big impact? And then we'll come back to the board and show the board, look, this is what we think will have a big impact in 2026 and in 2027, which will be the timeframe for the construction and renovation. And here is, here's a diagram of what we're not doing, but that could be part of, of a follow-up phase at Matthews Elementary School. So that's half of the 40 million. The other half would be divided roughly evenly between improved security measures at all or nearly all of our schools. And this is kind of our next level secure vestibules. And we'll have more explanation on, on what we mean by that to come out, but, but roughly, roughly 10 million will go towards improved security measures with the vestibules. And then the, the other quarter will be to construct a turf field and a track for middle school activities and athletics. Now, any, anytime we do an athletic facility, it's, it's for everybody, it's for everybody's use. So what I mean by that is, you know, a, a middle school, a turf field behind a middle school, that might work really well. Also, there might be times where a high school soccer team is practicing there or a flag football team. So it isn't going to be exclusively for middle school, but the purpose will be, the reason that we are motivated to do this now is we want to provide more athletic and activity opportunities for our middle school students. We could spend more than $10 million on such a facility, but we are going to do what we can with roughly a quarter of this ballot measure. And then there'd be room to grow later. So for example, you're likely to see, we want this to be a competition space, so you're going to need bleachers, you're going to need plenty of seating. We envision that probably what's going to happen is we're going to have seating on one side of the field for both teams. But in the future, as, as funds are available, then maybe you put visitor seating on the other side of the field. So there are, there are ways to draw a line where you can phase a project like that, but it's kind of like when we started with the high school phasing. But it's kind of like when we started with the high school phasing years ago, and we looked at what it was going to cost to build a fieldhouse gymnasium. And we didn't have, we didn't have the bonding capacity to build a gymnasium, so it was really hard to have a plan to do it when at the time, we, there was no way we were going to borrow the money to do it. You can't build half a gymnasium. You can't build half a track or half a turf field. So we are going to do the things that we can do for the money. And before we move forward with any of those things, actually before the community votes on it, we will bring more details back to the board, and then we'll, we'll campaign on, on the final outcome of, of those discussions. But fortunately or unfortunately, the, the deadline for getting on the ballot forces us to do, to make some decisions in December and January, even though we have until April, probably March more realistically, to really iron out exactly what we can get for the money and, and what, what we will do, what we won't do, and then campaign on that pretty heavy the last four to six weeks before the April election.
So.
Go ahead.
What are the consequences of tabling this until our next meeting? My concern is that we've barely got a quorum here. And by approving this language, we're basically saying we are going to do a, a, a bond issue.
Right.
And I would like to have more members available for that.
Yeah, you have, you have time.
If we, if we table this for, until our next meeting.
Yeah, it's not a problem.
It doesn't put anybody in a, in a bind?
Nope.
Okay.
And if that's what the, if that's what the board decides, I, I would welcome any other input on the language itself. And then we, we could bring it back with any modifications in January for a vote. And then we would just, we would just have you withdraw, withdraw your motion language.
I, I don't feel strongly enough about the improved traffic flow component to hold this up. But if it doesn't matter, I really would like more of us at the table to, to vote on it. I don't know how the other members feel.
That's what I was going to ask you, Mr. English. I think that closer to time to, you know, to be able to share the vision, maybe Ms. Porter could help us with this. If there's some sort of, I love three D renderings, but if there's some sort of mock-up drawing that we could put out to the general public so they could see improved traffic flow, Matthews expansion, middle school. I think that would be helpful. The district-wide security upgrades, I got to ask, would that also include an option for personnel?
We, I'm glad you asked that question. We, we cannot, we, we would not use bond money for operational costs like personnel.
The last ballot measure, I think we had changed the wording to allow security measures, including but not limited to personnel. I can't remember if that was last April.
That was on the levy.
Or the levy, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
So that, that's, that's a really important distinction, and we'll make sure that that's part of our materials this spring as well.
Got it. Thank you.
This is bricks, brick and mortar kinds of projects for the bond.
So as a point of order, do I need to withdraw the motion and then make a motion to table this?
I think just withdrawing the motion transforms it from an action item to a discussion item. And then I think we, I think the president could just say we're going to move on to the next item.
So I withdraw the motion.
Okay. We will move on to our next item. To withdraw it?
You want them to vote to withdraw the motion? Okay. So do we need a second to withdraw?
So all in favor of withdrawing the motion, say aye.
We have a motion.
I move, we withdraw the motion.
Second.
All those in favor of withdrawing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion has been withdrawn, and we will table that to our January meeting.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. All right, that takes us to our curriculum report. Dr. Allen.
Thank you. I'm not going to hold the mic long, though. I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Brandy Gump and her team that's here to represent our committee.
So the Curriculum Review Committee met on November tenth, and we did have fifteen courses presented on this evening. We had fourteen teachers join us, a building administrator, and six community members that were able to participate in the process. On your report, you're going to notice that we had a few courses from the fifteen that have asked for more time for revision before they, they ultimately present to the board. But we also have three courses that we've added to your list. They have completed revisions after going through the fall of twenty twenty-four process and spring twenty twenty-five process. So those courses are now ready for your review. Joining us this evening and behind me is Marissa Jean Grosso, our Curriculum Review Committee Chair. And so we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have about the report or the evening.
Okay, any questions?
There's so much work that goes into this. I feel bad for not asking a question. I just don't know what to ask. Thank you and your team. I don't, Dr. Taylor, you're, you're on that committee. I don't know why I pointed that out. I just, I feel like there's so much information out there, and I don't know where to go with that, so.
I am a part of that committee, and I do enjoy being able to kind of sit back and listen to the community, interact with our teachers, and hearing perspective and point of view. I felt like this last round was very productive. It was like a lot to look over in a short amount of time. But when looking over the feedback that you received, I felt like they gave great feedback, and you listened to what that feedback was and weren't afraid to put it on the document so that we could see some of the concerns moving forward that we need to kind of tweak and fix. So I, I really did appreciate it. It was, it was one of the, the better ones. I just felt like the community was more engaged, and they are getting in the swing of it, of what is expected of them, and they're giving even better feedback each time. So thank you.
Yeah, I would, I would point out to the board that, that this represents one of the, if not the most important aggressive activity that is happening very hard behind the scenes under the leadership of Dr. Brandy Gump to basically update all curriculum over approximately a three-year timeframe. And, you know, I don't, I don't necessarily want to say, hey, your, your time is up, because if, if this is actually accomplished, I'm not sure, I'm not sure that you're going to find a district out there that is, that will have done this in the amount of time that this has been done and done so well. And the resources that administratively and through the school board, the, the resources it takes in order to pull off something that aggressive, because all of it is done behind the scenes, is, is pretty phenomenal. So we do appreciate the support of the board in, in being able to help us devote the resources to all the hard work that happens and to engage the community in the process. So thank you very much, and thanks to the team for all your hard work. If the, if the, if there aren't any further questions, this, this is not an action item tonight, but this would come back on your January agenda, presumably in consent agenda.
Any other questions? Yeah, a lot of work that goes into the foundation, that then we see the results in our kids doing amazing and great things. So thank you for that. All right, next up, we have our superintendent's report.
Very good. We have your summary page there. I'll draw your attention to our year-to-date operating revenues and expenses. And we also have update this month on health premium, overage payments. We, we do have, you know, it's, it's kind of a misnomer because we label it an overage. But we do have budgeted nine hundred thousand dollars in such payments that we expect to make this year. And at the, the, for the time period of this reporting, we had made a, a pay, initial payment of three hundred thousand dollars. We have since made a second payment for three hundred thousand dollars. So the next time you see this reported out, it'll be, it will be two-thirds of the way. We still have no reason to believe that, that we're going to go over budget on this one. But again, you know, that, that is sometimes, we've, we've had years like that. So we feel like we're on track for that. And then we, since, since your packet came out last week, we have made an update on the MSIP six proportional attendance, so we are tracking it ninety-two point zero one percent, which if we can, you know, if we can maintain that, that would be a huge celebration. So it has, has a little bit of buffer there. The goal is to be at least ninety percent. And then calendar of events, this is, I don't have to remind the board that this is a busy month for you. You have, you have several, several special meetings in the month of December, part of the superintendent search process that I know that you will be working hard on. And the only other thing that I want to highlight is I recently participated in a group meeting with our new Jackson County Executive, Paul Lovoda and his team. He has made it, he's made it really clear, his intention to issue tax credits to county property owners whose, whose properties were assessed above fifteen percent increase for twenty twenty-three and, and also twenty twenty-four. That, he has, he has also shared his, his idea that that would be done over a three-year tax credit period for those, for those property owners. So this, this is to comply with the twenty twenty-four order from the State Tax Commission. So school superintendents from Jackson County have, have, have met with the executive. He is also meeting with representatives from other taxing entities, and that, that would be like library. I think MCC and fire departments are, are all going to be affected by this. So it was a very productive meeting, very straight talk, professional. Everybody knows where everybody stands. I, I feel like, I feel like district representatives were heard by the, by Executive Lovoda. He seems open to trying to find remedies for taxpayers that are as least disruptive to school operations, fire, and other services as possible. But I think everybody in the room recognizes the challenges in all of that. So any tax credit plan is expected to result in a decrease in funding for schools and other services for the next one to three years. So it's, we don't know, we don't know the impact yet. He understands the importance of knowing what those numbers are. They're confident they can get us those numbers. They didn't give us a deadline. But they, they, they expressed confidence that they have the data. It's just a matter of getting, getting everything calculated to be able to start to project. I, I read something today that shows that they, it's, their plan is still evolving. So I don't want to, I don't, I am not here tonight to speak with any authority on what the county plans to do. I only bring up my understanding of the topic so that I can caution the board that it is going to have an impact on, on school funding. We get, we get roughly half of our funding through local, local sources. And so any decrease in funding over the next one to three years is going to have an impact on, on our ability to address the increased costs of, of doing business. So, but all parties involved are working together to find the best possible resolution, and I will certainly continue to keep the board updated on that. But I felt that was the most timely, important update I could give the board at this time. So with that, I would answer any questions on that or if there's any questions at all on the rest of the superintendent's report.
Any questions? Okay.
You also have included on your agenda the minutes from two of your community engagement committees. The Finance Committee met in October, and the Facilities Planning Committee also met in October. And so those, those minutes are there, and we can talk about those as well. But we just always want to make sure we're putting the minutes on those meetings in front of the board for your review.
Any questions on the Finance Committee minutes? Okay. Any on the Facilities Planning Committee minutes, meeting minutes? Good. All right, that will move us into unfinished business. I look for a motion to approve the contract with Fired Up Consulting Group.
So moved.
All right, discussion.
Yeah, I'll start us off. We bring back this final proposal to con, contract with Fired Up Consulting to engage our community in a new CSIP strategic planning exercise. We would potentially put surveys out as early as January to start to promote that we are initiating a new three- to five-year strategic plan as a district. And it would also give anyone in the community an opportunity to give their input on what they perceive as the strengths and weaknesses of the district. Then again, if that all happens in January, then potentially in February, we'd have several nights where we would have a core group. It'll be dozens and dozens of people, and we'll do it in this room, where we have groups come and work night after night to review and shape the vision, vision for the future, where we want to be. And then in, as soon as March, this is the aggressive timeline, but as soon as March, we'd have an initial proposal for the board on the next three-year plan or five-year plan. We're coming off of two five-year plans, but the trend has been moving a little bit towards a three-year plan. And really, I think, I think really, the, the board has the flexibility to look at whatever the community recommends to bring and brings to you at that time. We can look at it collectively and say, are these, are these goals things that should be done in three years? Or, or some, are some of the things five years? But kind of the trend across the state is to move to a three-year plan and engage the community more often than every five years in that, in that process, in a, in a big way. But I would also say, based on the input from the last time, we were given a price range, and we were able to secure as a repeat customer that we were able to lock this in for fifteen thousand dollars, including any travel expenses for the facilitator, which he's, he's relatively local, so he wasn't, it wasn't going to be much. But he just wanted to assure us that there aren't any hidden costs on this.
Any questions or further discussions?
Quick question. I, I may have asked this last time. I don't recall. This didn't go out to bid, like in an RFP, right?
Correct.
This was just selected based on your prior experience?
And as a service, as a service contract. We have that flexibility.
Any other questions? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor of approving the contract with Fired Up Consulting Group, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Yay.
I forgot the other times. Okay, that'll take us into new business. I look for a motion. We're looking to put up our nominee for the Belcher Scholarship. So I look for a motion to approve Callie Beard as the board's nominee for the John Belcher Scholarship. Okay. A subcommittee met to review our applications, and as we have evidence tonight, we have a lot of students to be celebrated in many different ways. And although we sign up to be on these subcommittees, choosing somebody is always very difficult. But the committee met, and we were in a unanimous agreement that Callie was who we would like to move forward with that. In years past, because this isn't guaranteed that she would be awarded the John Belcher Scholarship, this is just the school district's nominee. It has, the board has awarded our Belcher nominee a scholarship in the spring if they had chose to apply for that one as well, so. Okay, any questions on that? All right, so all those in favor to approve Callie Beard as our nominee for the John Belcher Scholarship, say aye.
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 And any opposed? Okay, motion passes. The next piece of new business is that our school board candidate filing opens from December ninth at eight a.m. and is open through December thirtieth at five p.m. There are three seats that are available for this election season. Any other information or discussion about that?
I'll say a word about the process. You've mentioned the dates and the times. We'll use the same process out front as what we've been doing the last few years. Well, we'll have, it'll be clearly marked six to eight parking spaces. Well, we'll have, it'll be clearly marked six to eight parking spaces. That'll be numbered with instructions that you park your vehicle and sit in your vehicle in the order that you arrive ahead of eight AM on the first date of filing. And then at eight AM, Ms. Clappin will greet you inside and you will appear on, on the ballot in the, in the order that, that you arrived and waited, so. And then anyone, anyone else who arrives after eight AM on that, on that opening day, you'll again appear on the ballot in the order that your paperwork is, is filed with Ms. Clappin.
All right, next. Oh, this is your reminder, do you wanna talk about that one?
Yeah, we, we are pleased to have our staff holiday reception on December nineteenth from eleven to two at the high school in the band room. And our, we certainly invite our school board members to come join us and if it works out for you to come and greet and mingle and snack with us that day, just let April know and then we'll watch for you. We, we want you to park on the west side of the high school and enter that band entrance door, but if you, if you get over there and parking is crazy and, and you, you need help getting navigated, just, just let us know. But it is, it is a lot of fun. We do, we do have a, a holiday theme every year. There'll be some folks dressed up and if you are coming then, and you wanna participate in dressing to the theme, we can, April can explain to you a little bit more about what that theme looks like, so. But we're looking forward to having a good time with our staff. That is an early release day, so it works out really well. The, the students and their families, the students kind of start their holiday season with a, with a half-day early release and then we ask the staff before they call it a holiday to come join us and it's, it's really been a fun tradition.
All right, thank you. That'll move us into board policies. We are gonna look at JFCJ Weapons in School.
Yeah, we last discussed this at your last workshop and this one was actually on the list with the other policies that you approved in consent agenda tonight, but this one, we had a question, we had a question in the language and so we've made one more revision to it. So, as a result of that November workshop. So, students who are suspended for a weapon may be educated in alternative school, but in accordance with policy JCB. So, the in accordance with policy JCB language was added because in JCB, it says the superintendent or designee may assign a student to a different building or virtual instruction for the health, safety or welfare of the student to maintain discipline and safety in the schools, to better meet the educational needs of students or to address overcrowding in schools. Students who are moved to virtual courses due to misbehavior or disciplinary issues will be provided with due process when required by law. So, again, we make that change as a direct result of the discussion we had as a board last month and we can talk about it tonight and, and then you can expect this to appear at a later time in consent agenda, as soon as January perhaps for approval. If it appears in January, it'll be a standalone, so that's probably what we'll do, just so that we don't forget to come back to it in February or March with the next batch. We'll just go ahead and get the, the language approved in January.
Any questions on JFCJ?
Thank you.
With no further discussion, I look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes, meeting adjourned.